20 P O seven, four four oh six four nine nine. 20 P O seven, four four oh six.
You're welcome.
Chairperson of the D C H A Stabilization and Review Board, and I'm calling this meeting to order. This is a regular meeting of the District of Columbia Housing Authority being held today, March eighth, twenty twenty-three. This meeting is being held via WebEx video conferencing, and the board is here in person. The time is one oh one P M. As we do at the beginning of each meeting, I'd like to first ask for a moment of silence. Thank you. So this is a regular meeting of the board, and we've invited members of the public to sign up to speak via our website, or those who would just like to view the meeting can so live via the D C H A website linked to our Facebook Live page. The Board of Commissioners welcomes its constituent input on matters of public concern and offers you today an opportunity to express your views during this public testimony, during the public testimony portion of our meeting. However, we require that members of the public who attend our meetings abide by certain rules of decorum to allow the board to complete its business. For this virtual meeting, D C H A asks that you remain muted until you are instructed to speak and that you do not use the chat to comment when it is not your turn to speak. Members of the public cannot engage in any disruptive conduct or loud threatening or abusive language during the meeting. This includes any loud outbursts or shouting during times when you have not been invited to speak. Anyone who violates these rules will be removed from the virtual meeting. Serious or repeated violations of the rules may result in your being barred from speaking at future board meetings for a period of at least sixty days. We appreciate your interest in the matters before us today, and thank you in advance for abiding by these rules of conduct. At this time, I will ask for a roll call to determine a quorum.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Commissioner Blackson?
Present.
Thank you. Commissioner Burbidge?
Present.
Thank you. Commissioner Clay?
Here.
Thank you. Commissioner Dickerson?
Present.
Thank you. Commissioner Harris?
Present.
Thank you. Commissioner Jones?
Present.
Thank you. Commissioner Lee?
Present.
Thank you. Commissioner Murphy?
Present.
Thank you. Commissioner Reed? Commissioner Silla?
Present.
And Chairman Skinner?
Here.
Thank you. Mr. Chair, you have ten commissioners present. You have a quorum.
Thank you. So the first item of business is approval of the February eighth, twenty twenty-three Board of Commissioners' minutes. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes? Hearing none, can I get a motion to approve the minutes?
Motion approved.
Second?
Okay.
Okay, so let the minutes stand approved as presented. So for those of you who've been attending our meetings, I talked when we first started with the new board back in January about making some changes. And one of the things that we heard was that the residents were concerned about being left to the end of the meeting to be able to present testimony. So we want to correct that, and today we're going to have, we're going to separate residents' testimony from the general public testimony. So we're going to have residents be able to testify first, but the trade-off in being able to do that is that we're going to have to limit the time because we still have a lot of business to conduct and want to do that. So we're going to limit everyone speaking to three minutes, and that'll be, again, the residents will go first, and then we'll conduct the business of the board in terms of the resolutions, and then we'll have the general public comments. So I hope going forward, well, that'll be the way that we'll be able to conduct business. So before getting to the residents' comments, though, I want to go ahead and have our executive director give her report. There's a lot of good information she has to present this morning.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm going to pull up the deck in just a second. Basically, I have three main topics to update the board and the public on, and one is a quick update on where we are with our HUD report. I'm going to talk to you about the inspections and maintenance surge, and then want to touch on reasonableness and where we are with that and where we're planning to go. Excuse me. So, go ahead. Okay, so where we are with the HUD report is moving along at an intensive pace. We met with HUD since his last board meeting to just recap where we are now. Just to remind everybody, we had a hundred and three findings, observations, and recommendations. After our initial report, HUD closed out nine of those. We believe we have met the requirements for another fifteen, which we have asked to close out, and they're still waiting on their response. And we have quite a few. Almost everything else is in progress, and most of them are embedded in the plans that we have briefed the board on and are briefing our residents and other customers, the ACOF, which governs public housing. The admin plan, which primarily governs the voucher program, and then our overarching M T W plan. So I'll keep saying that just to remind folks. There are a few that have not yet started, but those are smaller things that we will still be able to achieve within the timeframe, and our timeframe is May thirty-first. So one thing I'm excited about, and I just sent to the board, I think on Monday, were samples of dashboards that we are proposing to use to show critical activities in our major program areas. And so this, we have pulled from other public housing authorities and from our own management metrics, and really want the board's feedback on those. Some of the reports, particularly finance, certainly will go into much deeper in the Finance Committee, but all of the reports will be available to everybody on a monthly basis. What I sent to you now are just mockups. As I said, in April, we will be populating the, between March and April, we're populating them with real data, some of which will, you know, have asterisks because it may not be the cleanest, but we'll be clear to let you know that. So you can just send feedback to me directly. It's Jenna, who, Tabasco, who is managing this with our consultants, but via the email, or if you want to have any conversations with us, we're happy to do that as well. The draft procurement policy was published for public comment. Thanks to the board for approving that to go forward, and the procedures are being developed at the same time. The, one of the other procurement-related findings and recommendations were that we have hired an outside integrity monitoring firm, and they have already started their process. So the process was to do a sample of various sized procurements to see if, in fact, there are any issues. If there are, then they would widen that sample, and we'll be having that discussion with HUD to see if that meets their standards.
And that's, that, Director, that's specific to the Housing Choice Voucher Program?
No, I'm sorry. Those are for, those are across the board, all of our procurements, our contracts. We have outlined a plan to fix our, I shouldn't say fix, but to fully implement our YARDI system, which is our system of record, and we are starting with finance because we've been operating with two systems, and that's why we haven't had the immediate financial reporting that we all need. So we are starting with that, and then we'll be moving to the other modules. So once we get that system up and running, and as I talked to you all a little bit earlier about how we're managing maintenance, I think the whole operation will be much smoother, not, you know, certainly in terms of reporting and accountability, which I know is top of mind for the board, but also in terms of operations. I think at some point, it would benefit the board to have a demonstration of YARDI or different modules, so you can have a better sense of what it does. So we will put that, you know, in the queue for one of the educational sessions. I think we have about three lined up, three topics.
Sorry, Director, you said that you'll start the work on the finance module at the end of March. How long do you anticipate that's going to take?
I do not know. I will, we will get back to you on that when we'll have the YARDI finance module fully up and running, but I think pretty soon, we'll follow up.
Dr. Donalds?
Yes.
Can we get a copy of the scope of work for the external firm that's reviewing the agency contracts?
Sure. Yep, we will provide you with that. And we've also engaged, or H C I, which is a consulting firm that looks at organizational assessments and structures that the Housing Authority apparently has engaged a couple of times over the last few years, but never really implemented its recommendations. So we asked them to update their recommendations primarily on the Housing Choice Voucher Program side, and that will go to such things as workloads and processing and dovetails with the other work that we're doing with the lab at D C to streamline our business processes. So we will have that completed by the end of April, and we'll be able to make some organizational and staffing decisions around that.
And is inspections part of the scope of that review, sort of the inspection process?
Which?
For Housing Choice vouchers?
No. So that's, I'm sorry, yes, it is. Inspections unit, as far as how, the larger inspections. Yes, it is. And in fact, on inspections, that came up at our council oversight hearing, and we're actually, we have a consultant on site right now, who, from Nan McKay, who met with the team yesterday to start looking at that, just from that perspective as well, and we'll be meeting with landlords, but so, yes, all of these pieces.
Great. I heard it come up at the, and you heard some complaints, and it's great that we've got a mechanism to hear that feedback.
We have the organizational assessment, we have our consultant, and then we'll be meeting with our landlord. So in, within a very short order, I think we'll have a better perspective on what we should do to improve inspections. You all have heard a lot about, and we'll hear a lot more about our plans for changing the way that we manage our wait lists and that we think will clear a pathway to allow us to expedite occupancy, and I'll talk a little bit more about that. But that is certainly part of the ACOF plan, and that plan was posted on our website for public comment on February fourteenth. That requires a certain forty-five day comment from HUD standpoint, but we are going way beyond that, and I'll talk about that in a bit. And we have already started drafting the procedures. So for each of the policies, we have to do, one is develop the policy, the board has to approve the policy, we have to develop procedures, and then we have to train on those procedures and begin implementing before HUD will close it out. So it's a lot of work that may take some agencies a year to do that we're compressing in a few months, but we are doing it, and we are moving towards being procedures and training plans for that. And also for the board's understanding, we're meeting internally to figure out what do we need to build in terms of organizational structure to manage all this going forward, right? We're still in catch-up, cleanup mode, but we've got to have an operation internally that is managing policies in real time, getting updates from HUD, establishing a training protocol for new employees, updating training for employees, tracking all of this. So we're looking at having a unit that will do that. D C H A apparently had that some years ago, and then went away from it, and the result was that no one knew where anything was, and we didn't have, we weren't in compliance with all of the requirements. So we're going to rebuild that capacity within the agency. Okay, so the big thing I want to talk to you about in the next slide is about the, that one, the compressed timeline that we're going to ask the board to approve regarding the policies. And again, that's the ACOF, the admin plan, and the M T W plan, that we are moving on an aggressive schedule, but all of this is aggressive, and it's aggressive because we need to make these changes. So one, I could say it's HUD, 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 and HUD, we have to do the corrective action plan. That's true, but it's more important why? To what end? We're not just checking our boxes here. And the, one of the biggest changes, and we think really critical one that we need to clear the way, is on this wait list. So we have the wait list, the twenty-two thousand people who've signed up for public housing twenty-five, thirty years ago, that's been frozen for ten years. I wanted to show you all in this chart, the yield that we have been getting from outreach on this outdated wait list has been virtually nothing. And when you all ask me, like, how many people have moved in, it's a very small yield. So that's because it's a stale wait list and because we have some cumbersome requirements in that wait list that people are no longer interested, their lives have changed, or they're not interested in our public housing. Other public housing authorities across the country do not have this type of structure that we have built, and it is really preventing us from achieving the occupancy. So we have to legally, and we will, and we have been going through everybody on the wait list and doing all of the outreach, inviting them to these big leasing events, and determining eligibility to match them up with units. We will get through that process of everyone, all the twenty-two thousand, within the next month. We need to then go to this targeted or site-based waiting list, and in order to implement that, we need to have these policies approved so that we can start that. We can't wait. So to the normal process for getting a policy approved, and it's really the regulations, there's a protracted process of, you know, waiting for public comment, meeting certain timelines, and then we're all on hold. And we, at the same time, as I said, we've been cleaning up everything, we've been changing the way that we operate so that we can go live as soon as we get the new policies in place. So we are going to ask the board, so just to be clear, we'll have one final eligibility event in May, and so that's everyone who has had a chance to show up, didn't show up, we've outreach, outreach, outreach multiple times, and we're going to have one big event to say, okay, we have public housing available, we need you to show up. Then we're going to take everything we have done over the past year and a half as evidence that the people who are on the waitlist are either not, are no longer interested or eligible for our public housing. That allows us to clear that wait list and start the new one. And that, it will be a refreshed wait list, it will again be site-based, and so just to remind you, it'll be lists, and we'll try to do it in a way that's very clear to people, and we've got some examples of where we're saying we've got X number of units available at Potomac Gardens, X number one bedroom, and people can select, and they can select multiple ones, and there'll be a limited period of time that we will open the list and have people to sign up and quickly match them up, and then we'll exhaust that, and then we could open it up again, or maybe we filled up all our units and we have to put a pause on it. That's not likely to happen. But, so it's really important that we were able to get the new policies implemented right away, and so we're going to ask the board at the April twelfth meeting to publish emergency and proposed regulations at the same time that you're adopting the plans so that we can then put these new procedures in place. And of course, that will be for everything, not just for the waitlist, but I think that's the one that in terms of timing and being able to implement and get results of filling vacant units is the most critical one, and months delays just means we've got units sitting vacant. So I'm going to pause to see if anybody has any questions on that.
So just so we're clear, you want us to approve the policies before the regulations have gone through there that are across?
Correct. You will adopt a policy, we're asking you to adopt the policies.
And you will immediately begin to do what you need to do.
Yes. Yes, we have to train people and get, but yes, we will be able to implement, and which will, of course, will meet HUD's requirements, but I mean, the bigger picture is that we'll be able to move forward in the way that we should be operating. Now, I want to say this because we're going to get pushed back, and we've already heard some from some advocates. We have been doing a lot of outreach and communications, and we're still going. So we started with the education session we have for you all. Then we've had the citywide advisory board, we had them in last week to walk through, hear the proposed changes, again, not just on the waitlist, but, you know, everything from the pet policy to overnight stays to all of the significant changes that are in these plans or things that have been in the plans that we just haven't been enforcing. Next week on Monday, we're meeting with, Christopher Blackson has organized a meeting with the resident leaders. Nona Eads is going out, meeting with resident councils. So we are, and we have a meeting with advocates next week, and I'm trying to think, so we, you know, we're not trying to hide, or, we want to be clear about what we're doing. To your point, I think, Mr. Chairman, if there are significant changes that come as a result, significant recommendations that the board wishes to adopt that come as a result of the posting of the regulations, we would have to come back, and we will, and we will share all of that. The board can decide, we'll make our recommendations from a staff standpoint, the board can say, you know what, we got so much feedback on X, Y, and we really want to, we might want to change this, and then they would have to be amended, and then we'd have to repost. So, but we think that they're solid enough, that they make sense enough, that they'll get us to where we need to go, that we are really encouraging us to be able to move to move forward at the April meeting.
Commissioner Silla?
Thank you. I have significant concerns around the preferences for individuals experiencing homelessness, like moving away from those preferences, and I am concerned about people who have significant housing instability, you know, being able to track and manage preference as it relates to like the site-based options that we're moving towards. So working with your team, we're going to be presenting at the I C H's Housing Solutions Committee meeting. We've agreed that we'll devote an entire meeting time, so I just want to make sure that we really think through what that means for homeless services and how that'll, you know, and if, you know, it might still make sense from an operational perspective to move in that direction, but if that is the case, then what are the kind of mitigation strategies that we can take and that your team can adopt, can incorporate into your policies so that we can make sure this doesn't have an undue effect or impact on people's experience?
Exactly why we're having all of these meetings and seeing that reminds me that, of course, between, I've already, you know, identified a number of meetings, and I wasn't aware of the one of I C H Solutions, I'm glad to hear about that, is that we'll have that feedback to bring back to the board before the April meeting. So we could even make proposed changes before then based on the feedback that we've gotten for the board to consider, and I think, my point is, I think we would have touched so many bases in that we will lift up that information to the board well in advance, so you can say, well, I think I want you to tweak this and tweak that before we post, because we'll have a few days then to post.
Can you just briefly, at a high level, talk about what the changes are? Because I know there's a lot of discussion about the homeless and the homeless preference or not preference. So what do we do, what is the preference now, and what is being proposed to change?
Okay, I'm going to see if I can articulate that. I might need someone to help me. Okay, so basically now, we have tiered preferences on the waitlist. That means that, and we have, and you can jump in, I see Lori nodding, so she probably knows better, but one of the criteria is that you must be homeless, and homeless meaning by HUD's definition, literally homeless, not in a doubled up kind of situation, moving from place to place, not in a temporary housing with rapid rehousing, or, so you have to be homeless, or we have to, so that's the number one, right? That comes to everything else. So whoever's been on the waitlist, then if you're not home, and you have to document that, and there are lots of ways that has to be documented. Your name shows up, which goes in date order. You're not homeless, but you're in a bad situation. You're in a domestic violence situation, you're in a, living in an environment that's unsafe, you've been, you and your three kids are living with your sister and her four kids. You're not going to meet that criteria. So then we have to wait and go to the next person who does, and the next, and the next, and the next. That's part of it, and it's not just that it's cumbersome. I think the bigger thing is that because of the district's huge investments in ending homelessness with all of the L R S P vouchers, the special population subsidized programs, that we have a robust system and set of resources for people who are homeless that go through, I'm looking at Teresa, she could certainly jump in, that go through the homeless services system. So that way, we've got two big gates, and, but now we're creating a, not a barrier, but another hoop, and if you're, then you're not on the waitlist, then you got to go, so we think that actually will allow more people to be housed.
You know, and?
And I may have said, and then someone else can jump in, Lori, you think I got it right, or Rachel?
I guess I'm not clear on what the change is. What do you, what do you?
The change?
Make us, maybe just make a suggestion, which is that before we meet on the twelfth, that we schedule like one of those education sessions where you can walk us through what's being proposed, like we've done, is that in the works?
We did one, but we can do it again.
And, but around?
This, specifically.
Yeah, I'm talking about this, and like, once we get the comments in, so that?
Yes. Because I'm not doing updated one.
I, we really all have to get our heads around these issues, and I don't think we can do it live in a board meeting.
And there are many other issues, too. So I think what we will do is after this meeting, we will send you the, or point to where we sent the deck that has all of the changes and everything laid out, so you guys can make some comments, highlight things, and then decide if you want to have a special session, or you want to use the beginning, like?
Let me just make sure I'm tracking. So these are the same, we already did an educational session on these changes.
Correct.
They're now going out for public comment, they're going to come back to us, and I guess what I'm, that's helpful. And I guess what I'm, that's helpful because I'm clear now. But I think for me, it would be helpful to sort of have a session where we can understand what the public comments
Okay.
That then can feed into the board meeting. Does that make sense to folks?
It might make sense to also just extend the invitation that ICH Housing Solutions Committee meetings are open to the public. If folks want to join that so that you can hear directly from homeless service providers and advocates of the experience that
Is it being
can also share that as well. All of our meetings are virtual.
If, if you could share, that would be terrific.
And also the residence meeting, because there are other comments that we've heard about some of the changes for public housing residents and that are coming from people who are not public housing residents. And I think that we have to honor and respect what our residents are saying.
I need to hear from both sides.
Yes. So there are multiple ways to get at that. But yes, that can tee up maybe at the April meeting, the comments, because we are organizing them and kind of into big buckets of what we're hearing.
But even if a couple of days before, we could do
Okay.
an education session, at least.
Okay.
Thank you.
I'm sorry.
Commissioner Burg.
A quick question, and I guess some of the residents listening, are you saying that when we come to homeless, if a person has been evicted and have no way to stay, stay, they're not considered homeless if they're living with a relative? They have to get in one of these homeless outreach programs?
If you are doubled up, you're not considered homeless. Like they're, you're a youth, you're between the ages of 18 to 24. Yes, but they're, it's very nuanced. It's very detailed. The way you use the word homeless and I use the word homeless.
Exactly.
How the HUD definition of
So I thought homeless, my name is not on the lease and anybody could threaten me out because I don't have a place, but I got, just so they can understand. Okay.
And I don't think we want to go. I think that it's nice. I appreciate the statement that there's a HUD, because I think that's where the context gets lost. There are different constituents and stakeholders that have definitions that are specific either to their circumstance or their agency. But for this purpose, we are using the HUD definition and that's a nice clarifying.
Yes, so we can, yes, so I'll move on now.
Yes. Question though, related to the list. So as I understand it, and again, correct me if I've got this wrong, but did I understand it, as people get invited to these events, if they do not show, if they're on the list, they get invited to one of these recruitment events or housing replacement events and they don't show, then they go to inactive status, but they're still on a, they're on a shadow list almost.
On the same list.
And the understanding in the, is if that person surfaces and they say, I finally was able to access my email, I'd been locked out, I got it, then they can come back.
Yes.
But my understanding is what we're saying is, once we get through the list in May, that we will, that kind of shadow list or that inactive status will be gone.
It will, but someone can come back and they can appeal.
And that's what I was going to
And they can say, oh, I was missed. I've been, I was in the hospital, someone stole my mail. I was on this list. We of course still have, you know, have that database. They can come, they can
I think that's helpful, at least for me to know.
Their protections.
You, you know, we heard it from the council, people say, oh, they've been on this for 20 years, they miss an email, they're gone. It's not, that's not, it doesn't work that way. Yeah, thank you.
Okay. I know. Okay. So anyway, back to the deck, please. Okay, so just quickly, the, we'll be coming back and now we'll, we'll pull together a session a few days or a week before the board meeting to bring everybody up to speed on some of what we've heard and some of the other things that maybe you all have heard as well. Okay. The next thing I wanted to just give you a quick update on our inspections and, and maintenance surge that we started in January. This is, we're going into every unit. And we have done so far five properties. We go to the next one. And Harvard, Knox Hill, James Apartments, Claridge and Horizon House. And we're on schedule. We, I'm getting a weekly report of how many units have been inspected and it's, it's over 700 now. And then the next steps are what is being done. So there are basically three things that come out of the inspection. One is if there are any emergency repairs and we have to do those right away, obviously emergency. If there are other repairs, then they've got to put together a repair plan. And then another big issue unfortunately is pest and rodent issues and we're going in immediately if we have to deal with those. So everything is on schedule. I want to at some point give you all a much more, a deeper update on that, but really pleased and the teams are working really hard. Okay. Oh gosh, thanks for our time and everything. Now we get to rent reasonableness, okay. Go to the next one, Rachel. Okay, rent reasonableness, okay. This, we will not have time to go into deep, but I, I just want to put things in, in perspective because everyone read the big post article. I'm not here to dispute and try to explain and break that down. I think a lot of it was factually correct, but missed a lot of the nuances and the complexities of our whole process for setting rents. So this HUD requires public housing authorities to set a rent, a payment, annual rent payment standard, which we had not done for years, but we did last year, to complete a market study annually, which we had not done for five years, but we've done it now, we did it last year. And then also update the utility allowance, all these things were, we were found in the HUD report and were findings. We haven't done the utility allowance, but we're working on that now. And to follow a rent reasonableness process that includes checking comparable rents for each unit. And this is the practice that DCHA had not been doing and not for bad reasons. I think DCHA over the years had set up a system of looking at neighborhood rents and using the averages. And as long as the rent did not go above that average listed for that neighborhood, which is on our website, we paid it. That we understood that was allowed under our MTW plan. HUD had never dinged the agency for it, but when they came back and did a report and they were like, no, you must do the rent reasonableness test for every unit. I will say this, and, and which we are going to do. So we are now reviewing a couple of tools. We have one already that DCHA bought a year and a half ago, right, right before I got here. And we're looking to see if that one makes sense, if it is compatible with our, our YARDI system. It's really important that the systems talk to one another. We had another one that we reviewed today from Philadelphia that we like a lot, but so we, we will land somewhere shortly in terms of what that tool will be. That tool, and then we'll come back to the board and tell you how we're going to implement, which I am not going to review here because we're not ready. And we're not ready for all of the comments and reactions. We did it last year. And we have to, have to make some revisions. So, but there will be a date certain by which we will be employing this rent reasonableness tool. So we will come back to the board, we will let you know all about that. And I just wanted to show you one more thing, just to
I'm sorry, before you get, are there any questions on the rent reasonableness? Because I, I have a question. I hope it's general. I just want to understand in terms of what happens in the field. So we have a staff person that ultimately makes a decision or recommendation. I don't know how far up the chain it has to go on what that rent's going to be for a given unit.
So where it works now is we have a list by neighborhood.
I understand that, right. Yeah, but somebody, but the staff person has to say
Yes or no?
Right, okay.
Staff person says yes or no. The landlord submits a package and says, this is my proposed rent.
Right.
Here's my address, blah, 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 blah. The staff person then looks at the neighborhood address. If that rent, this is how it has happened, is below that ceiling that, that's listed there, then they approve.
They approve, okay.
What we have to do now is do the comparison and say, well, does that rent make sense? How does it compare to other units within that geographic area? Does it have amenities? This is what, you know, it's kind of like an appraisal.
Right, and that's what I was thinking. So, but you, you know, when you say a tool, I'm thinking the tool is like going to give the answers, not, it's going to take any subjectivity out of
Correct.
the equation. And this is it. This is the number
It's correct.
The staff person going to approve that.
There will still be some choices for the board to make in terms of the rent payment standard.
Right.
Kind of norm. So yes, but that's correct.
But I'm, I'm just trying to see
objective tool.
Right.
We go in, you put, and we saw the demo this morning, put in all the particular
Yeah, so, so again, my concern was with the individual staff person and not putting that person in, you know, in precarious situation. They've got to make a decision.
Yeah.
And, you know, and they're like almost doing a mini appraisal kind of thing.
But they weren't though, they, they were just making sure if it
Right. They've been doing, but I'm just trying to figure out how this is going to be different with the quote tool. I just want to see how that tool
Yes. And yep, we can do a demo. We had a demo this morning. I mean, you'll
Okay.
So that's what we
One other, I, one of the, I know that article was full of information, some was accurate, some might not have been so accurate. One of the allegations, I think, was that some of the rents were the suggestions that we were overpaying was that they were units that were, while we were overpaying, they were also substandard conditions. And I think you had mentioned, I just want to confirm that your team has sent inspectors out to sort of look at the properties that were identified and assess that situation, the situations of those units.
Yes, and we're aware of those properties and we've already been working
You'd already been working on them. That's great. Thank you.
So I, again, there's a lot more on rent reasonableness that I really want the board to understand as I've been learning and, but the, we are currently not paying above our payment standard or above the allowable rents and enablements. And so the methodology that DCHA has been operating under so far, we are not overpaying rents. Now, by other standards, that's arguable and we will, but right now we are within our boundaries of the rent payment standard that this board has adopted and the average neighborhood rents that we're operating under. Okay.
Does that, I think what you're also saying is that we, you're, you think it's unlikely that we're going to have to pay HUD back? Because I know that's been a question of, are we going to owe HUD money?
That will probably be a negotiation.
But it's not a slam dunk either way.
Correct. Implementation will, yes, there, there are choices to be made about implementation.
Understood.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Director. Very, very informative.
Yeah.
Okay, as I mentioned before, before we get into discussing resolutions, I want to go ahead and have resident comments. And again, we're going to limit comments or testimony to three minutes. And we have a list of residents who've signed up to testify.
The first resident we have signed up is Adrian Lynch. Adrian Lynch, okay, there she is. If you're unmuted, you can go ahead and start your three minute.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, we can.
Okay, awesome. Good afternoon, all. I have se, I have several things, but I won't be able to get to all of them in three minutes. But my main concerns have been, and life just took, took over and I wasn't able to address this anytime sooner. My first one is about the rent and the, the determination of how much monies are going, how, how much the vouchers are going to be worth based on the subdivision. And, and that was a concern for me. I, I'm a transplant to southeast from Ward five. And because of these determinations, I had to move to southeast and I didn't want to. And what I found was in that area, I, I knew several real estate agents. And what I found was the properties that I really wanted to be in, they were priced maybe $2 to $5 over what the voucher is valued. So that got me wondering, you know, are these real estate agents, you know, tapping into, you know, the, the website to find out, you know, what, you know, what the voucher is worth? And if they don't want voucher holders, they're going to raise it up based on them having access to that information. The other thing is I found over the years as well, the vouchers are more valuable in underdeveloped and undesirable areas of DC. And my experience with that was when I was, you know, searching before I moved here, there's something called Old City One and Old City Two. I never, I'm a DC native, never heard of that. Went on the, you know, went on their site, I think it was a private owner. When I got to the site, because I had a real estate agent with me, there was no grass, the, the unit was not even complete. It was not, the, the pictures were not correct at all. But the, I think my, my voucher was valued at almost $2,800 there. But I would have preferred to be in DC side of Tacoma or Brightwood and the vouchers are, are valued much lower. And so that was, that was a real issue with me because I'm raising three young daughters at the time. Same thing like with Trinidad, you know, and certain areas that a lot of us would not want to be living in. And we should have a choice of that. So I'm just concerned, curious about how you make that determination. And I think you mentioned earlier about, I took some note, about doing a study, a market study or something. But I, I think that that needs to be revisited and how that is done, how the vouchers are valued very high in areas that, you know, some of us that are undesirable to live in.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Lynch. And
Should I go through the other issue before? Because I still have, I still have a couple of minutes, right?
No, that was, the buzzer was that meaning that you're
Oh, okay.
Well, you could certainly email your, the rest of your comments.
Yeah, I did earlier, yeah.
Okay, all right. So we do have them. But again, as the director said a few minutes ago, this is still an issue that we're looking at. We're going to be doing a lot more in terms of analysis and we'll be coming up with some recommendations that's going to change, I think, a number of the, the, the numbers that, that you were just referring to.
It sounds like discrimination though, sounds like some discrimination on the real estate part.
Thank you, Ms. Lynch. Charmaine Covington.
Yes, hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. Three minutes.
Okay, hi. Yeah, I'm Charmaine Covington and I'm a disabled resident. Like I said, the one that called you, I went to bed and woke up blind like 20 years ago. And what I noticed that the housing authority needs to change, and I deal with the ADA department, and I was listening to everything he's talking about inspections, inspections, but no one ever talks about accessible inspections. And there is such a thing. I mean, even though we have to reach out to the Department of Justice to get it done, but even when I reached out to Mr. Gambo, who's head of inspections for DCRA, he knew nothing about it. And what irritates me about DC Housing Authority, because when I did lose my vision 20 years ago and you know, they, I went to the ADA office, and don't get me wrong, Ms. McDaniel is wonderful, Ms. Mack is wonderful, but you only have a few options for blind residents. And like blindness is a spectrum. And the only thing y'all ever offer, even these new buildings being put up, is Braille. Braille's in the hallway. We don't sleep out in the hallway, we don't sleep out in the elevator. There's nothing in any unit in Washington DC except one. And that's a residence called City Ridge, which is 3900 Wisconsin Avenue. They're the only apartment building in Washington DC that least caters a little bit to visually impaired people. And they use special appliances, it's called Thermador, that's the name of the company, y'all can look it up. And it says that they specialize in visually impaired, you know, people to use their appliances. And like just to tap in with the young lady said before me, as far as the housing voucher, like I was recently awarded a voucher and I'm still working with a reasonable accommodations because everybody's talking about, I know people are homeless, I know people have been on this voucher list forever, but I feel like it should be separate list. Not saying the disabled is more than the people that's, you know, that's not disabled, but we're not under the same umbrella as them. We don't have the same needs as them and our needs is never addressed. And right now I'm just talking about the blind community because we on the bottom of the barrel. Like I told you before, the only thing that is offered to us is Braille. And it's two different types of Braille. How do we know what type of Braille is even in that unit? I mean, we're not saying the unit in the hallway. So my thing is, I feel So my thing is, I feel like with these new developers coming, the housing authority, the mayor, whoever, that, you know, that you can talk to these developers, think about us. Because all they ever had is mobility and hearing impaired. They talk about railing. I don't need no rail. They talk about, you know, the wideness of the door, that's for mobility. As far as you hearing impaired, you get a light, you know, you get a doorbell with a flight, a flashing light. You know, but there's nothing for a blind resident. And where there is, and they do hold vouchers, the cheapest apartment there, which is not in their premium plus apartment, the rent starts at four thousand. And like, I know for a fact, even with my vouchers based on the zip code, the maximum voucher is twenty-eight seventy-two. And the other thing y'all need to tap into, every day in Washington DC, the rent changes. You can start on Monday, the rent could be twenty-seven hundred, but by the time you finish the application process, it's at three thousand again. So you just, you're out of it. So, the rent is an issue. Another issue is, you do not think about people with disabilities, because since I've been listening to this call, no one even addressed it. Because there's a lot of disabled homeless people, you know, and then like you say, of other people in different situations that may not be deemed as homeless. But as far as visually impaired community, I feel the agency does nothing. And then we're offered a reasonable accommodation, because I'm going through one right now. But, you know, I would like to live there because it's more accessible, it's a walkable neighborhood. And everybody don't want to live in a neighborhood where we got a duck every few minutes because of a bullet sign over our head. And I know it's crime in every neighborhood, but it's some neighborhoods that don't have that crime. And that's normally the higher end neighborhood, the two-hundred-sixteen zip code, that's the code that I like. But the vouchers, the maximum vouchers in that area would be twenty-eight seventy-two. But like the lady said, these bazudo, Bernstein Management, I can name every management company in DC is very rare unless it's a special, then we fall below that house choice and voucher amount. And I think.
Okay. Yes, thank you, uh, Ms. Covington. I think that's a, a really good point in terms of visually impaired. And, uh, I'm, I'm not sure what the agency actually is doing in that regard. But, uh, from the perspective of the board, uh, we want to follow up and find out what the agency is doing now, what we can do to improve the situation. Thank you.
Uh, next is Sharita Corum. Ms. Corum. I see her name there. If you could unmute, you have three minutes. Sharita Corum. Okay, I'll move on. Kenneth Council. Mr. Council, if you're there, you have three minutes.
Good afternoon, all.
I see his name, okay.
Thank you.
My concerns today, my concerns today is basically what everybody's talking about. I understand there's a new board and you all are trying to get everything correct. But please listen to the voices and the needs. I like the young lady that just spoke of the needs that are. I've always said, when I used to set where you all are setting, we have to design what constituents in mind. And we have to be reminded of what the needs are, the vouchers. I literally got two phone calls over the weekend, two seniors, where their landlords have gone up a thousand dollars on them. One was literally at the emergency room at Washington Hospital Center because she was that stressed out. So if it's some way that we can literally try harder to find out what's going on with these landlords, raising from paying eight hundred to nine hundred and giving them a thousand dollar, uh, raise, well, I shouldn't say raised, but telling them that their rent is being raised a thousand dollars from eight, from eight hundred to nine hundred, and from nine hundred to eighteen hundred. It's, it's, it's crazy. And these are seniors, as well as the vouchers, like the young lady saying. You all have seen all of the, the shootings and things that are going around. The parents are being, making sure that they're careful in where they want to live. And you all know that there's a lot of transfers going on and I've always said, there's certain areas, it's territorial. They don't want to go in certain areas of the city because they know what's there. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Council.
Thank you. Next is Ms. Patricia Malloy. Ms. Malloy, you have three minutes. Thank you.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
My name is Patricia Malloy. I'm former Lincoln Heights President and Council President. I was relocated to the offsite in twenty-twenty-two. Residents of Lincoln Heights are so confused. They have been receiving calls from residents as to why residents are being relocated to Lincoln Heights and been in terms that they have been remodeled in Lincoln Heights. Residents in the nineteen buildings, uh, which were to be transferred within the property. Lincoln Heights residents still have ceilings falling, floors caving in, road infection, raccoon possums running in and out of apartment building. Two or three families in apartments with no security. Maintenance taking longer than usual. Staff keep saying they are having problems getting materials. I am asking to be a part of all of Lincoln Heights meetings regarding the transformation plan of the property. Myself along with others started this development in two thousand and six. I have livened and advocated for new community, making sure residents are treated with respect. Council member Burdage keeps saying, and Webex, stop living in the past. Well, the residents of Lincoln Heights have nothing to look for in, in the future. They are dwelling on the past because they were promised so much that have not come to fruition. Who on this board or who in DC Housing Authority have put foot in Lincoln Heights to address the residents' concerns? The residents are still reaching out to me and Lord behold, as long as I have breath in my body, I'm going to assist them, I'm going to direct them. Only thing I'm asking, think about it, there is no representation in Lincoln Heights, but the agency is making decisions. You all just had the movement toward planning. Not one resident knew about it. Thank you for letting me testify today.
Thank you, Ms. Malloy.
Thank you. Next is Sue Smith. Ms. Smith. Can I move on? Uh, next is Shante High. Ms. High.
Hello, good afternoon. Um.
Good afternoon.
Ecclesiastes, chapter five, verse ten, "He who loves money will not be satisfied with money." Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, "He who, he who loves money will not be satisfied with money, nor he who loves wealth with his income." This is also, uh, this also is vanity. Good afternoon, like I said, to everyone present today. I'm Ms. High, President of the Council at Park Morton. I'm here to speak about how Park Morton residents continue to live in subpar conditions despite the fact that DCHA has capital funding flowing throughout the agency. So much so that Director Donald was featured in a recent news article about receiving a bonus of forty-one thousand, two-hundred-and-fifty dollars, yet we have not seen any of this capital funding being directed towards resident-owned businesses that are HUD Section Three registered. Why does DCHA continue to allow public housing residents, uh, units to become more rundown and dilapidated? Why does DCHA continue to fail residents who want, need, and deserve more for their lives? Among, among the many violations noted in the, uh, Department of Housing and Urban Development HUD report lea- released last fall in twenty-twenty-two, DCHA still needs to meet the outlined criteria. DCHA is failing to assist more residents with quote-unquote moving to work in order to become more quote-unquote self-sufficient, so that they will be able to move towards purchasing a permanent home, because as I stated in the DCHA oversight hearing, quote, "Housing security starts with home ownership," end quote. We cannot continue to allow DCHA to hinder the process, uh, the progress of our lives when time waits for no one. Another day is not promised to any of us. Do the work today. Make the contracts available today. Repair the items today. Stop lying about the progress and produce results of the alleged progress. There are people who will praise the work of Director Donald and even the new BOC. And although we reside in the District of Columbia, I always love the Missouri slogan, "The show me state." You have to show me in order to convince me. Thus far, this BOC has not shown that it is for the people any more than the previous board. With, uh, the folks are living in squalor, living in mice-infested, moldy, collapsing housing. And the priority here seems to be to displace everyone, demolish their homes, pat yourselves on the back and give yourselves bonuses and job well-done congratulatory speeches, while residents are struggling to make ends meet, trying to survive like a person drowning in the deepest parts of the ocean. As I close Duraonomy, chapter twenty-seven, verse twenty-five, "Curse be anyone who takes a bribe to shed innocent blood, and to all the people, and all the people shall say, amen, amen." I'm Ms. Shante High, President of the Council at Park Morton. Have a good day.
Thank you, Ms. High.
Hello.
Uh, Mr. Brown, we'll, we'll get to you in a second, sir. Um, Paulette Matthews. Is Ms. Matthews on? I'll move on. Uh, Detrice Belt, Ms. Detrice Belt. Okay, I'll continue. Carl Smith.
Hello.
Yes.
Hello.
I'm sorry.
Can somebody hear me? Because I've been saying hello.
Yes, Ms. Matthews.
We can hear you now, Ms. High.
I hate to get high before I can speak, but that's what just happened here. Um, first of all, to the young lady that was speaking, um, in reference to the units or places that are not, um, equipped for those who are blind, they say you learn something new every day. So I don't know how many other people in the room, um, have already known and didn't do anything, or whether they learned something today as well as I did. Far west is Shante High. I always appreciate what you're saying. But getting to the, my issue right now, and it's about ADA. Um, I've been having an ongoing problem with a fence that I have, um, put up for my emotional stress dogs. Yes, I'm still there with that. And so, I just submitted something just now to, uh, our resident manager, but I have a problem with the sound effect. Um, all of this stuff be sounding good from, um, the director and all of that. But at the beginning and the middle of the day, just like Ms. High said, you know, it's about actually seeing these things. I have been going in and out of meetings. I have been at every property, not here lately within the last four years, of the DC Housing Authority, because I advocate for housing. Not only that, even though Bray Farms do not stand now, I am also the Vice President of the Bray Farms Tenant Alliance Association. And what I don't understand from anybody that sits in any office or position that goes and comes and comes and goes, uh, how nobody is understanding or hearing the voices of the people who live in this. It doesn't matter how many people say what they say, nobody seems to listen. And I don't know if the HUD policies need to be changed, because a lot of people think that because something is written is justifiable. But when you can look around and see and hear all of this, it's no way that you can think that what's going on is right. And I don't even know what normal is. You know, uh, even when COVID people was like, I'd be glad when things get back to normal. I'm really trying to figure out what really is normal, because what I see is not normal. Um, and, and things are getting worse and everybody's making excuses and passing the buck. But at the beginning and the end of the day, everybody needs to have a suitable place to live and should never be hungry. I heard her speak of how people, um, that are homeless that stay with someone, like what kind of rule the HUD has. But all of this is done by design. This haven't just started happening. This has been the history. And it still hasn't gotten corrected even in two thousand and twenty-three. I would like to ask the ADA, because Ms. Rochelle should be sending it in a few minutes, um, to really look at my case, please don't have me stressed out like I have been since two thousand and nineteen to get the job done. I don't know if you're a new, well, I know you're a new person, because there, there was a guy, uh, I can't think of his name, but I think he, uh, did, he had braille or whatever that was in the ADA office. That's why I'm surprised of what the young lady said. Um, then there was, uh, Mr. Ken Slaughter. Now it's somebody else that I have no clue of. So before, when you look at my paperwork, don't just look at what you see. Please check the history and note that I'm having a very hard time, like adjusting from Bray Farms to come over here, then been told how I would be accommodated for what was lacking before I moved here is why I've made my choice, is why I'm having this complete nightmare. So everybody that swapped chairs, go out, come from here, there, do whatever. The story has been told plenty of times. I'm trying to figure out if in two thousand and twenty-three, will y'all make a big difference? Because you can even run through your own tapes and, and y'all meetings y'all been having, of all the meetings y'all had, to see that the same thing is being done, and we in two thousand and twenty-three, and we're talking about the same stuff, and today or tomorrow is still not going to be done. And that real-time conversation that the, the director just said, we've been looking for real-time stuff too, to happen that has not happened. So, I want everybody, I don't even understand how some of y'all can go to bed at night and how these meetings can take place like everything is doing so, so excellent, and it, and it's not. People are going through stressful and emotional problems, financial and all of that, and still have to deal with getting on this line, trying to explain something that should have been fictioned and never really been happening in the beginning. But everybody feels because of the neglect, now you want to force people out from where they live to all different parts. Some people can go into their grave, some people might not even make it back to Bray Farms. And I think that there needs to be a special meeting that's been held with Bray Farms tenants. And, and anybody else.
Ms. Matthews, can, can I ask you to wrap up, please? Yep.
Yes.
Yes.
Do something, fix something.
Okay.
Don't just keep having board meetings. And the question I want to ask is, when will y'all start being meeting in person? Your staff comes to work, other people go to work, when are we going to start, um, going into the room? And, and even with going in the room, if you don't do nothing and we still got the same results, don't matter. But I'm just curious of why we're sealed on this too. I don't have a zoom.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Matthews. Next.
Um, thank you. Uh, I was told that Ms. Sharita Corum is available.
Hello, Mr. Smith.
Yeah.
Yes, Mr. Smith, I'll be calling on you. Please be patient with us. Yes, Ms. Corum, please proceed. You have three minutes.
Okay, um, uh, my name is Sharita Corum. How's everybody doing?
Good, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, well, I hope it improves for everybody that's on the call. Um, I want to speak about my situation, which is mandatory transfer. I'm facing a mandatory transfer to a location in a worse locate, I mean, in worse condition than the apartment I'm currently residing in. And I'm being told that if I don't accept the apartment, which is in Potomac Gardens, twelve-twenty-four I Street, apartment thirty-one, myself and my family are facing eviction, which is against DC Housing's policies. DCRA is involved as well as the Children's Law Center. DC Housing is aware of all the issues I have and violations, multiple codes due to the flooding from upstairs unit repeatedly carried and assist, neglect from product, property management. Why? Because if I get flooded, it has to turn, it turns into mold before anything is done and it's not even never done. Um, old plumbing that posed multiple health and severe allergies, asthma attacks due to the mold, mildew, and water intrusion, lack of heat in the winter, or none at all. My windows frames are not weather secure. Recently last month, no hot water for the whole weekend. Four sewage back, backups within the last, um, two, last three weeks through my kitchen. My tub was filled up, my, um, with sewage water, um, for the whole weekend. The after hours did never come out. Um, the kitchen sink has flooded, um, three to four times this, this month, and, um, last month, within, last month and this month. I have also had water damage and in my electrical box, which is next to the bathroom. Um, it is, it's exposed to prolonged flooding as well, because I've been flooded so many times. I've been being flooded since twenty-seventeen. Um, I had an incident where my whole ceiling fell in as well in twenty-eighteen. Um, I've contacted DC Housing several times before. I've been living in this unit for almost eighteen years, where I've been flooded several times over and over again. I have so many failed mold reports that are in the system with DCH, DCHA, DCRA, which is turned into a DOB now. Um, these issues has caused me and my family to be extremely, have anxiety, lack of sleep, depression, stress, and not knowing if a fire would start within the walls. Um, also in the walls, we hear rats and, and, and mice crawling and digging. It sound like they get ready to come through. Um, we don't know when the next flood is. I, I go to work and I'm at work and my children are calling me, telling me about the kitchen sink overflowing, the whole kitchen is flooded, all the way into the living room where I had carpet. No one ever removed the carpet and the whole living room been flooded. Um, these issues has caused me and my family extreme, well, I just say that, I'm sorry. Um, I sincerely believe that me and my family deserve better and that the mandatory transfer is within retaliation and malicious on behalf of the property management office, which is at one thousand K Street. And so many have to suffer in our building in silence for the face of homelessness and consequences for speaking up for ourselves.
Thank you, Ms. Corum. So we will follow up with the staff.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Carl Smith. Mr. Smith, you can proceed. You have three minutes.
Okay, good afternoon, uh, Board and Executive Director. My name is Carl Smith. Hello?
Yes, we can hear you. We can hear you.
Okay, I'm a, I'm a previous uh Resident Council President at Kinnawa Courts. And uh, as you all, some of you all know, I'm uh, we are doing uh construction on the site. One of the agreements with the builders was that they would not displace us as far as parking. We've been having a problem with parking the residents since the building. And uh, one of the other agreements was that they were hiring people from the community. And we've not uh had that situation take place. Also, one of the things I wanna speak about is the maintenance uh follow up. I've had residents that still keep up, keep in touch with me that says they've had problems with leakage from their roofs. And I think some of it's coming from them not cleaning the drains and, and, and stuff like that. And I've had problems with just the uh maintenance being low and we're not even getting the basic street cleaning and stuff of that nature. And uh, another issue is the part, the police uh being on the site. The last time people uh, we had, we just had a shooting on the street. We've had about two or three in the last month. And the police comes around after the fact and soon as they checked the site, they're gone. We don't see them anymore. So our safety is always, you know, a problem and a situation. And I understand the whole city is going through the same thing. But at one point, when I was Resident Council, I made sure I spoke with sixth district. They had to come and sign in to let me know they were on the site. Now we don't have that. So I think, you know, it's a couple of issues that need to be addressed in our community. And uh, I just appreciate the time. I have a few more issues, but I wanna hold anybody else up.
Okay, thank you, Ms. And thank you, Mr. Smith. We appreciate you bringing that to our attention.
Uh, next is Benita White. Benita White. I'll move on. Donna Towns. Ms. Towns, if you're on, you have three minutes.
Hello, good afternoon, everyone.
Good afternoon.
My name is Donna Towns and I am a Park Morton resident. I have several issues in which I'd like to address today. And my first issue is regarding non-backdated dated rent charges. My daughter um left Park Morton in May twenty seventeen. And um, I, I tried my best to present the lease to the interim managers. The interim managers would not accept the lease. I waited patiently for Ms. Barnes to return. She returned in March, February, March twenty eighteen. My daughter was, I, I presented the lease and my daughter was removed from the lease. And Ms. Barnes and I had a course, two, a, a course of action of my daughter gonna be released and the rent from May twenty seventeen to March twenty eighteen would be backdated. To date, my resident ledger is in a serious disarray and it needs to be completed. And I'm hoping that everything works out fine regarding my resident ledger. I've spoken to the area ma- um, area manager yesterday and expressed what was going on. And she said that um she's gonna work on it and have another, have appointments for me tomorrow. So I'm thankful that that is, is finally being addressed. Or, or even though I've made complaints and nothing has happened, they placed the weight on me saying I didn't do whatever in time, but I did do it in time. Secondly, I'd like to um speak upon um an unlawful eviction and which occurred to me at Park Morton. Okay, um, in June and on May thirty first, um, Park Morton was um in the first phase of lead removal. Well, um, Ms. Ba- Ms. Diallo, um, oh boy. Okay, let me get it together. Okay, so Ms. Diallo became Park Morton Manager and um August, September of twenty eighteen. And at that time, I had a bathroom ceiling collapse, collapsed, the ceiling collapsed. And I had a flood and throughout my apartment. And for months and months, I've kept asking Ms. Diallo, when will the repairs be done, the mold be removed from my apartment? It never occurred. I've lived in the mold conditions for eight, eight months. And um, now it's the first phase of the lead removal. So Ms. Diallo had me to sign a lease on May thirtieth for apartment number thirty three. Um, and, and the, the flood occurred in apartment twenty one. So I signed the lease and she promised that my property was gonna be transported upstairs, but that didn't occur. My prop, the lead was, the lead removal, the lead was removed from my apartment. And my entire apartment twenty one was disposed of, unlawful eviction. Instead of transporting my property upstairs to apartment twenty one where the flood occurred to apartment thirty three, my, my, my property, belongings, everything was tossed off the balcony into a DCHA dump bulk truck. So DCA, this was a conversion. They took possession of my property. And to date, I have not been compensated. Um, I mean, to try to rebuild my quality of life, but my life would never be the same because I lost all of my sentimental um property that I've had since childhood. I lost my mother's pictures. I lost a jury. I lost everything. And uh, I'm just hoping that I'm heard and that I need to be compensated. Especially mentally, for mental stress. I'm very much stressed from twenty seventeen to present. So.
Thank you, Ms. Towns. We, we do hear you. Thank you.
Okay, and then in the previous board commissioners meetings, I spoke and I was emotional. I'm still a little bit, I'm, I'm less emotional now. And these, and someone said that they were gonna get back to me to try to sort through everything in which I've discussed. No one has gotten to me yet.
Okay, we'll, we will make sure that someone follows up with you, Ms. Towns. Thank you.
Uh, thank you. Uh, I was told that Ms. Sue Smith is on. Ms. Smith? And if you're on a phone, you can unmute a star six if necessary, Ms. Smith.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, Ms. Smith, please proceed. You have three minutes.
My name is Susan Smith. My living, I'm a Lincoln Heights resident. My concern is my rent. I did a DC state when it first came out. And I've been having problems ever since. They credited me three thousand forty seven dollars when the check got to DC Housing. They said the check was on over two thousand some dollars. So they asked me that I received a check of DC Housing. I told them DC Housing received the check. That's where they only gave them two thousand. So we try to figure out what happened to the other money. Now they sent me a statement on my rent statement. They said I owe them three thousand four hundred seventy four dollars. So I'm asking you to take that off my rent statement and for y'all to leave it alone, cause I don't owe no back rent. I've been so stressed out that I had to call Ms. Pat Malloy. Three times she had to email somebody east of the river to try to help me solve this situation. I don't talk to the councilman and everything. Mr. Al Hutchins went over my bank statement, my bank books and everything and my rent statement. He said I don't owe no back rent. They have not taken this off my account yet. They haven't fixed my fuck door. It's a raccoon that come in the hallway. Don't have three babies. All of them in the hallway. And I just got a call this morning saying they trying to move me out of here to move me in another apartment on the bottom floor, but I'm not going, no lock or security on the door.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Smith. Okay, I believe those are all the, the resident testimony. And again, I thank you all for uh coming and appearing before the board and, and again, as we do every month, we will uh follow up. Uh, you may not be aware, but at the end of each meeting, before the next board meeting, the staff prepares a list of all the, the issues that have come up at the meeting and, and what they've done in terms of follow up. So they give that to the board uh at the end of each month. So the next item uh on our agenda is the um resolutions. And we have three resolutions coming before the board today. And one of the things I mentioned in our organizational, first organizational meeting back in January was that we wanted to uh make sure that we made the best use of, of our committee structure and that uh hopefully that will make uh the board operate more effectively and, and efficiently. And so starting with this meeting, we're gonna have the committees who review these uh resolutions uh to make presentations on the uh resolutions. So uh in this case, uh the resolutions before us today um all came before the, the Capital Projects Committee that I believe the committee met last week. Uh, reviewed the um resolutions and the information uh with the Capital Project staff about what's being proposed. And I'm gonna ask Chris Murphy, Commissioner Chris Murphy, who's Chair of the Capital Projects Committee uh to present the resolutions uh today, starting with Resolution twenty three fifteen, which is to authorize an agreement for what's called the Oak Street property.
Great. Um, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, and uh I appreciate the opportunity to, to represent our committee that did meet. And um, we do have three resolutions today. Um, we are not formally voting on these. We did not formally vote on these, but we did discuss them. And there was um unanimous support for uh recommending all three of these to the full board. Um, the first one relates to Oak Street and I'm gonna uh kinda do this at a high level. And then there's a, I think there was a slide, uh, there were some slides that were presented that have some maps, because I think when you wanna get into the nitty gritty of this, you kinda need a map to look at. So let me do this from a high level and then ask um John uh and his team to sort of call up the map um and we can look at it. But um, at a fairly high level, let me just say, so my understanding is that uh DCHA uh owns Oak Street Preservation through one of our uh sub, subentities. Um, as part of, there is an adjacent property to that property that DCHA does not own that Morning Star Community Development is looking to develop. Um, there are some, some slivers of DCHA property or Oak Street Preservation LLC property that um are relevant to the development of the adjacent affordable housing uh property that they're trying to be uh developed. So what we are being asked to approve is a resolution that would authorize uh the director and her designees to uh enter into an agreement with Morning Star Community Development that would um permit them to advance, move forward on the construction of the uh affordable housing building that they would like to develop. Um, and that will also address some of the parking needs of the current residents of Oak Street Preservation. Um, so with that, John or, or Andre, can I ask you to, to pull up the map and just kinda walk us through how the, literally how the parcels fit together?
All right. Good afternoon, John Stringfield, Office of Capital Programs. Can you see my screen?
Yes, we can see it.
Okay, so just wanna kind of orient you. So the parcel that we're talking about is in the Columbia Heights neighborhood of DC uh bordered on the north by Oak Street and on the south by Meridian Place. And the two parcels that are in discussion are highlighted in yellow. One is an easement that allows access to the rear of the property uh where the actual development will be uh that's proposed will be taking place. And then the other uh yellow um horizontal lines are where our residents actually park now. So from or space for about twelve parking spaces. And what we are proposing is, or what's been proposed is to uh for a market rate uh disposal of these two yellow parcels here in order to allow for access for the development. And then uh there will be uh units replaced for where our residents currently park.
So I, this is, I, I don't think this is a terribly complicated. Um, it's a fairly straightforward proposal. Does, I don't know if anyone, and if anyone on the committee wants to add anything or if anyone has any questions.
So uh, this is uh Chair Skinner. The two yellow parcels that are outlined there, are they both owned by uh?
They're owned by DCHA. Well, they're owned by a subsidiary of DCHA.
So it was, it was my understanding that uh, uh, the district, I think through Dempad also has an easement on the property somewhere.
Yes, there was an affordable covenant uh initially on the parcels that any transfer uh that happened with the uh, with, actually with the parcels in the red um would cause the, the affordable covenant to be enacted. However, because the proposed uh development will be all affordable uh that, that does not allow for that uh, that covenant to in, uh be enacted.
And, and John or Andre, who's ever holding the slides, could you just flip to the slide that shows the project that's going to be developed? And it's not our project, but um it is kind of what we're helping to enable. It's that they're in yellow.
So here's the proposed property here in the bronze. Um, and actually the developer, Morning Star is on the line. If there are any specific questions, uh commissioners about their proposal, but I believe the proposal is for a hundred and twenty nine affordable units in this uh project here.
All right, Mr. Chairman, I wanna question. Yeah, it just sounds like there aren't any questions, sir, but we wanna call for them.
Commissioner Dickerson, do you have, did you have?
Just, would you review a little bit on the hundred and twenty nine new units, the parking? Where will be uh, those are very narrow streets. I do travel them sometimes. And uh, I just was wondering where the parking for the new unit.
Yeah, and this was a question I know that the prior board had raised. Um, and I think the staff kind of heard that feedback and went back and found a way to accommodate it. So, Sir John, do you wanna describe how the parking is being addressed?
Uh, I would defer to the actual developers on this one, if you don't mind, Commissioners.
Sure.
Okay, who's representing the developer?
So we have Morning Star Stan Vodri, I believe is on the line.
Yes, uh, this is Stan Vodri from Morning Star. Good afternoon. Uh, Andre or John, if you're on, if you can uh put slide six up, I think it shows a little bit of the access for parking. So you can hear me all right. This is um right now the building that is the tan colored building um is the Oak Street Preservation Housing Authority Building. And as uh, as John described, one of the things we're asking for is an easement to drive where it says parking access there. So the Oak Street residents today use that as a driveway. We're proposing that the residents for the new development would also use it as a driveway. And then our parking area um is accessed via that driveway. So our new residents will park in that um in the area under the building. And we have an area sort of partially under the building and alongside of the building, which is adjacent to and, and on the same area where residents of Oak Street park now. So, so the Oak Street residents will have the same number of parking spaces, but there will be additional parking for the, uh, the Meridian Place residents, which will.
And can I ask during construction, where, will, will the current parking spaces be eliminated while, and before the new ones are available? Or how will that work?
We um, we have a, a site um uh on um that is a, a adjacent to, but not on um the, not being developed. Where anytime we, if we have to, if we have to take away parking spaces from Oak Street residents for, you know, for a month or two months during construction, we have a site that's on the same block um that would be a park. The um, uh, the property, the, the property that's being developed is currently owned by Trinity A and. is currently owned by Trinity AM Church on 16th Street. And so, you know, there's, there's the ability to, to work with the church and other parcels that we have control of to allow for residents to have temporary.
Can you speak up?
This is Commissioner Harris. Could you speak up? And I have one quick question.
My answer, or is, or are you not going to repeat it?
You probably should repeat it, I think.
So just, I'll, I'll be brief. I'm sorry for, you couldn't hear me. But the, the parking for during construction, we, if we have to take, our plan is to not take away any of the spaces. But in the event that we did have to take away or block access to spaces that Oak Street residents use now, we will provide parking on the block, in an adjacent property, adjacent lot.
Commissioner Harris, again, one quick question. There's currently, did I say 12 parking spaces currently? And with 139 units, how many additional parking spaces will there be underground with the easement once in place?
So, so to be clear, the 12 spaces that we're talking about are the spaces that Oak Street residents park in today are providing access to in the new development. There's not, the parking area for the 129 new units is much larger than that. It's, it's up to code and it's not, I mean, it's, so it's, it's not, it's not 12 spaces. It's 12 spaces that are impacted for Oak Street residents.
So yeah, the question was how, about roughly how many?
Yeah, what's the code require?
I mean, I, I can, I don't know off the top of my head how many spaces the code requires.
But whatever the requirements is to have 100, it's only 139 units? Or is it just 139 low-income units?
Affordable.
Affordable.
I thought the total was 129.
Total property.
The actual property.
Yeah, will be in totality.
One person at a time, please. So how, how many units are being built? How many are affordable?
So, so to be clear, we are a contract purchaser for the building, for the project. I am not, I'm, I, I don't have, I don't have building permits yet to build anything there. I am attempting to, I'm attempting to get the, or something, to get that done. So, so I can't, I can't commit to you today that there will be, you know, 115 parking spaces or 145 parking spaces. It will be up to and per code, but I, but I can't tell you yet. I don't have an approved plan. So I don't, I don't want to, I don't want to make, I don't want to misrepresent what we've, what we've got approved.
But can you tell us what you're proposing in terms of the, again, the affordability? How many units would be market rate? How many at 80%, 60% and so forth?
I can tell you what I would like to do, which is an all affordable building that would be funded using affordable housing tax credits, which means that none of the units would be more than 60% of median family income. But I do not have, I do not have the tax credits approved yet. As those of you that are familiar with that process, no, I have to design the building first. Then I go through that process. So, so I, I'm, I'm working on it, but I don't have, I don't have that approved.
Yeah.
So are there other questions?
Yeah, I think that, can I ask, I think the question is, how many units are likely to be built in the new building? Because I think you might have said 112. The materials we have in front of us say between 45 and 67, not 45 plus 67. So, and I think the concern is, if we're going to give you an easement, is it going to turn into a superhighway? Because people are coming and go, because we got hundreds of people who are coming and going all the time. So I think we're asking you to make us, you know, address that anxiety that it's, it's not 112 units.
So the, the entire property is significantly larger than Oak Street. It goes for the bulk of the block. The building that is being proposed is for 129 units. There are affordable units and they're at different ranges of affordability. The buy right zoning on, the buy right zoning on that parcel adjacent to you is what we're building.
John, I think there's some discrepancy in the materials and what's being represented.
If you look, if you look at page three, you're concerned.
Yeah, so it's, it's in totality of 129, but that doesn't, I thought I heard that totality was going to be affordable units. So that's not the case, the right number.
And is your, in addition, is your, are you asking about the total number of units? Because you're worried about how much traffic is going to be coming in.
Traffic and parking too, because if it's not going to be enough parking there, they're still going to have to park, it's around, that's a tight area. That's all about Columbia Educational Center, right?
16th, 14th.
They're like, streets already.
I'm sorry, can we have one person speak at a time? Commissioner Silla?
Yeah, I, just given where it's located in the Northwest, if the trade-off is 130 affordable housing units versus parking constraints, especially if they're able to build underground parking, I would recommend that we err on the side of, or vote on the side of affordable housing, recognizing that like we have parking constraints and I'm sure zoning will have parking constraints. And a lot of other people will also review the project and have parking constraints on their mind as well. So maybe I'm making a motion to?
I was going to ask if there are any other?
How many affordable units?
Yeah.
He said, he said, oh, there would be all tax credits, 60, 60% of them.
I, I think, I guess what, can I say, I mean, as the chair, I think what's troubling to me is that I don't feel like we have the right information. And I think that's causing everyone a little discomfort. And I take your point, which is that ultimately we may approve it. But I think there's some anxiety that there's a lot of unanswered questions here. So I, what are the consequences of kicking this a month? Let me ask that question.
So, so as I said, as I said earlier, I am the contract purchaser attempting to buy land from the church. I cannot buy that land from the church unless you approve the transfer of the property that you have that, that is, that was shown on, on John's. Your land goes, your land area. You have land area that entered, that, that, that is sort of conflicting into that space that the church owns. So the church can't sell it to me unless those, those two red areas there are owned currently under the DCHA Oak Street partnership.
Yeah, no, no, I think we're, let me be clear. I think we're clear on what the issue is. I think the problem is we don't, we were given information that's not correct. And I think that makes everybody a little bit uncomfortable. So.
What information is not correct? I'm sorry, I'm not understanding. What did I give you?
Well, I mean, yeah, I think, I think, I think we have what we need. So I don't think we need to.
So there, there was.
We've been, we've been trying to get approved now for going on six months. The church is, the church is unable to sell the property without your board taking some level of action. I'm, I'm happy to come back and continue to, I'm happy to come back and continue to update you as we go through the process. But, but we, we don't have a designed project yet. We don't have a financed project yet. We're just trying to buy the land at this point.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
What, I mean, I, I'm feeling uncomfortable myself and I'm sensing discomfort from others. And it's not about the product in general. It's just, there's a general concern that when we're given information, we need to know it's right and it doesn't feel right. So.
Okay, and I, and I'm not sure that's on the part of Morningstar, but we have a memo in front of us that has different numbers. So we want to make sure that it's correct. So, so I'm going to ask that we defer this until the next meeting. At that time, we can work with our staff and with you to, to make sure we have all of the correct information.
Yeah, our, our contract will probably, I, I can't say that we'll be able to proceed with the project. So I, I appreciate that. I wish that you had asked me if there's a question that you're concerned about. I'm hap, I'm here to try to respond and answer the questions if there are concerns. But we, the church, the church is, I don't know that the church has the flexibility to continue.
So are you, are you, you said you're, you're a contract purchaser. Are you also the developer? Will you be actually developing this project?
I, I am the developer and contract purchaser, yes.
Commissioner?
Yes.
Can you tell us a little bit more about the time sensitivity that you are speaking to? Why is there a rush to move on this transaction at this very moment? Is it, is it really not possible to wait until our next board meeting?
So it is really not possible to wait until your next board meeting. We are, this project requires low-income housing tax credits, which come on a, which come out as, those of you that know, it's on a notice of funding availability. The notice of fund, of funding availability has a certain set of requirements. In order to meet the requirements to apply for the funding availability, I will need to start that immediately. We're, we intended to start that process almost six months ago. I do not have time to apply in this year's round. And the church would not, the church doesn't have the flexibility to wait another year. So I cannot commit to doing affordable housing without the DHCD money. I can't get the DHCD money unless I apply on their schedule. I don't have flexibility to change that schedule.
So let, so let me ask the question this way. So I'm, this is to you, John Stringfield. So, so what you're asking the board to approve today is for you, for you, the, the staff of DCHA to enter into some kind of agreement with Morningstar, the terms of which are outlined, and I think it's Exhibit A and the information that we have. But that could change. So.
Yes, this is, this.
Negotiating process.
This request is to allow the executive director to enter into, for Oak Street Preservation, which owns the parcel, to negotiate, to enter into an agreement with Morningstar, who we're speaking to now, that will facilitate us transferring those two slithers of land that will allow Morningstar to execute or to purchase the parcel from Trinity, Trinity AMZ, AMZion. And so we're, again, we're just asking for authorization to allow the ED to enter into an agreement.
So I guess I'm a little confused about why we have to approve something for them to purchase from, from the church. Why can't they just go ahead and purchase from the church?
Because they need acts, the parcels that we have give them access to, to have access into the area where they're going to develop.
That's correct. But if we just buy it from the church, it does, the church property alone does not support the development of all the units. We would have to, we would have to do three smaller market rate units. We can't do the affordable housing development.
So, so I'm, you know, I'm sensing some disagreement on, on the part of the board. So, I mean, I'm open to, you know, I suggested a minute ago that we defer it. But if there is a true deadline that he has to meet, again, just picking up on, on Commissioner Silla's point, we really need to have more affordable units. And I would like to see us be able to proceed. There's still a lot that has to happen to make the project a reality, as he talked about, including getting the tax credits, which are very competitive, and other things. I think there's also a zoning issue that, that comes up. So by our approving this today, really is not going to make the project happen, but it'll give them, I guess, a step forward in terms of trying to get it done.
Mr. Chair, and I apologize on behalf of the staff if we've got information that's not correct or if we're not clear about the information. So could I ask, in, in that same vein, to, for an opportunity to clarify or correct information you have? I know this, the church has been talking about this and had plans for this for over 10 years or so. And I think they've gotten to a point now where they have an interested buyer and a developer who could move forward with, with, with this project. This land is useless to us. And we think we, we worked out a good arrangement to continue the, the parking combination for our residents. But I, I do apologize if we've given you information that's not correct and if we could have a chance to correct that, if it's material to this vote, certainly would want to do that instead of deferring.
Director Donald, my apologies. I'm, I'm also concerned that DHCD has moved to accepting applications and processing applications twice a year. So it's not that the project has to wait another full year, but that they can apply in six months. But maybe what the, what the developer is saying is to be ready to apply in July or for that July period is, you know, they need to move now before, or, or otherwise they're forfeiting that July window and therefore can only apply in January. Am I understanding that correctly?
We're only, I mean, I agree with you that it has been two year, two per year in recent years. My understanding in the, is that there's not a commitment for a second round this coming year. But at the very least, it would be a six-month delay. And, and it takes many, it takes several months to get it. So I, I, I'm sure you know better than I what the, what the schedule is. So I'll defer to you on that. I, I'm saying that we had an expectation to apply in June or the, for the July, for this, for this cycle. At the very least, we would be pushed back six months. I understand it from talking to the, to the, sort of the experts in that area that we're working with, that the delay is closer to a year if we miss this window. But I, I'll defer, I'll defer to your judgment on that. You probably know better than I.
Commissioner Black, I have a question. So if they're building 129 units, are you stating that 35 of those units will be affordable? Or how many units will be affordable? As it say, mixed income.
So again, that was information that we were given. My understanding, you said earlier that it's 129 units, that you were applying for tax credits where all of the units would come under the tax credit requirement of being at 60% of median or less. Is that correct?
That is correct. The number, the number that you're referring to is based upon the, is based upon the covenant with, with, with DMPAD. As Mr. Stringfield said, there's a DMPAD covenant that comes with it. That requires it as a very, as a, sort of as a bare minimum threshold. That's not our proposal. That's the minimum threshold.
Okay, so I'd like to close out this discussion and call for the vote. Can I get a motion to approve Resolution 23-15? Can I, I'm sorry.
I don't know what the discrepancy is. I just wanted a chance to cure that.
Yeah, but I, I mean, I'm taking the developer at his word, which he just said confirmed. 129 units at 60% of median.
But the other discrepancy here is also that the presentation material said the land covenant is, is null and void, like it doesn't apply. But the developer is saying that it does apply. So that's another discrepancy too, I think, that we need to get clarity on.
If I could clarify quickly, the covenant applies inasmuch as it is a requirement with a base threshold. As Mr. Stringfield was saying, when we're building it beyond that, it does, I mean, you could say that the covenant applies, but it's not, it's no longer a limiting factor. We're building well beyond what was required by the covenant.
Again, I'll, I'll ask for a motion to approve Resolution 2315. So the chair can make a motion? So I will move for approval of 2315. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we proceed with Resolution, for approval of Resolution 2315.
Can we have a discussion?
All right, we can have further discussion.
Okay.
But I'd like to limit the discussion.
No, I understand. So, but I just want to sort of outline my concerns. I was comfortable moving forward this, I, I'm thinking, we in some ways have a responsibility to think about the people who live in the Oak Street building, right? There's 50 units there. When I thought that this had, you know, up to 67 units and 35 of them were affordable, it seemed reasonable to give them an easement to use that alleyway to access their parking. When I hear that it's 129, it gives me pause. They could, lots of buildings like this have a curb cut and they come in off the street and they don't use the alley and they don't inconvenience another building like this. I'm sure they have good reasons for wanting to do it this way. But I, I am not prepared to support this without understanding more how the traffic is going to work with 129 units and however many parking spaces are required by the code. Because I, I think I need more information when I think about, if I was living in Oak Street, I would want us. I would want us to give this a good hard look before we signed off on it. So that's where my anxiety comes from.
Okay, so any other discussion? So we'll, Commissioner Lee?
I'm just going to add that when we read this, it was synthesized, and it's really just piggybacking off of Commissioner Murphy, but it was synthesized in the context of what's here. And so I think that it, there are some levels of unreasonableness to now suddenly have to synthesize it, something that's twice the size. It, it's just, that's just not the context that this information was synthesized in. And suddenly it's something different. And so there's a level of unreasonableness to synthesize that and agree with it immediately.
Okay, so it's been properly moved and seconded. So we'll have a roll call mode on the, roll call vote on the motion.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Dickerson?
Present. I've hunted. I, I, I mean, I, whenever there's.
Okay, don't need to say any.
Recordable, I say yes. I think there's outstanding issues that have to be addressed. And so therefore, I'm waiting for those outstanding issues to be addressed. So that's my issue here. I can't be forced into saying yes to, until I'm really totally satisfied.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Harris?
No.
Thank you. Commissioner Jones?
No.
Thank you. Commissioner Lee?
No.
Thank you. Commissioner Murphy?
No.
Thank you. Commissioner Silla?
Present.
Thank you. Commissioner Blackson?
No.
Thank you. And Chairman Skinner?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Chair, you have one yes, five no, and two present votes. The resolution is not approved.
Okay, thank you, appreciate it. So Commissioner Murphy, we now, we have two resolutions regarding the Berry Farm development. And I will remind everyone, Berry Farm is a long time coming, but we do have a building under construction now, and we want to move to the second building to get that under construction.
Amen. Mr. Chairman, let's, let's hope this one goes a little more smoothly.
Yes.
We got two of them, two of them. I mean, folks, I think most folks know about this sort of overall project. It's got multiple components and important property and where they, that we're eager to continue to, to develop units on. Some of the key numbers I'll just flag for folks is that prior to the demolition, there were 432 units at Berry Farm and 12 in Wade Parks. So for a total of 444 units, when this project is done, there will be 480 replacement units, so quite a few more replacement units, plus a number of market rate units and 300 units for homeownership opportunities for folks. So this is greater than, you know, we're, we're creating more units than were, were once there. When it's done, we're looking at 900. I think, I think if I did the math there, it's about not over 900 units. So we're, we're not, we're not taking anything, we're not reducing the number of affordable housing sites. As we've previously voted on, Building 1B, the Asbury, I think is under construction now, right? And we'll get it completed in follow 2024. That's the first building. But today, we're here to talk about sort of two additional components to keep the momentum going. The first one relates specifically to infrastructure. And what we're being asked to do is to amend an agreement, an MOU, that the Housing Authority has with DEMPED to provide infrastructure dollars to help continue to develop and build out the street system and the sidewalks and the underground utilities that will enable future projects. So that's the first motion, or the first resolution to consider. We can certainly go into more details if folks want that. The second one is to authorize the director to enter into closing doc, or preparation of closing documents for financing for one of the next buildings, 1A. 1A will be, it's a mixed use multifamily building, 139 units. 50 of them will be public housing units with assists from RAD funding. But it is to enable the director to develop the documentation to continue to develop the next phase of the project, 1A. So happy to entertain questions or conversations about either, or comments about either. No comment?
I was going to make the motion.
Oh, okay. I guess we should probably take them one.
One at a time, please, yes.
First one is on the, is the infrastructure. So this is to amend the MOU again, to take additional dollars from DEMPED.
Commissioner?
23-16.
Commissioner Jones?
Now move that we adopt Resolution 23-16.
Can I have a second?
Commissioner Lee, second.
Commissioner Lee, any further discussion? So we'll have a roll call vote on the.
We work fast.
23-16. I looked over. I'm sorry.
Perfect timing, feeling good about this.
Yes. Commissioner Harris?
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Lee?
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Murphy?
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Silla?
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Blackson?
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Dickerson?
Yes.
Thank you. Chairman Skinner?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Chair, you have eight yes, the resolution is approved.
Okay, so before we, we proceed on Resolution 23-17, we have two members of the public who wanted to present testimony on Resolution 23-17.
And the first is Paulette Matthews for 23-17. Are you there, Ms. Matthews? You have three minutes. Okay. I don't see Ms. Matthews will move on to Mr. Treese Belt. I do see her.
I don't know why I have a problem with connecting with you when I push star six.
Okay, go ahead, Ms. Matthews.
No, really, because this is the second time now in one day. But anyway, I'm actually on the line because of being a former resident of Berry Farms. And to say thank you for the guesses right now, and I'm really, really a little confused and baffled due to the fact that a lot of y'all had not been attending any of the meetings. Some of y'all just got positioned in your positions, but were never at, like, the meetings to know what was going on and what was happening. I'm very disappointed on my personal note because through all of that and asking about money, there probably should have been a conversation about how these things were going to be done. Because when they were saying that the money was there, or whatever the case may be, when I look at what's going on, I don't feel, you know, everything has a process and a procedure. I know that. I hear laughter and everything, and the presentation had just started this off. I, I'm a little upset because of the mere fact I hear a lot of people saying, we're trying to hurry up and get them back. I just recently turned 64. And I don't know, I mean, my health is good, but due to situations and lifestyles and everything else that's going on, firearms and all that, gunshots at any given time, you never know. And it doesn't just have to happen in public housing. You could be on any street, in any neighborhood. And so that's a concern of whether I get back or not as well, and if I was to even get back to Berry Farms. So with the first building being put up, that, that was an issue for me. They did the groundbreaking before I even think there was a foundation. I was actually there. Now we're moving on to another building, which is Building A. And in my thought process, I felt like all the, everything on some of the roads should have been done. Basically, for real, to keep it real with you, if, when the recreation was being built, if this all could have transpired, we probably would have been back by now. But because of circumstances, policies and procedures, permits and all of that, I guess that's where the breakdown comes in at. I'm really not clear. I don't know whether or not it could be done like that. And, and the next go around, far west, on Berry Farms property, with putting, doing the houses where as though you put, like, complete the whole row, not this one step, two step, three step stuff. I mean, a lot of people are older than I am that would like to get back, but might not. And some have gone and passed since that time. And who's to say if that was based upon the relocation of, you know, moving from Berry Farms? Who knows? Because stress is something that everybody gets. But I wanted to ask a couple of questions in reference to it. And I wanted someone to explain to me what 1A is and how many, you just said how many units and stuff that there was going to be. So I guess that could be something that spoke of right now. But how will y'all communicate with what's happening here at Berry Farms with the residents? And what is the timeline for all of this? And how long it'll take before 1A gets built? And why is the process so long? Is it because of funding, not really having it, but yet y'all rushed us out as if y'all had everything in line and in place or in motion? And I don't want to feel that nobody say to me it's because of COVID, because the process had started way before COVID, even if we hadn't heard about it before then. Because I always knew since the first time that I hit Berry Farms, after waiting 21 years on y'all waiting list, that once I arrived, that somebody was coming. At that time, they said it was the military or either it would have been Homeland Security. So, you know, when it finally arrived and what was going on while we were being, y'all don't say displaced, but we do. And moved around and scattered in the DC Housing Authority profile. Some situations are worse. And again, I'm going to repeat it constantly. This is not nothing new to y'all. It almost makes me feel as though this is all by design. I don't care how many people get in a chair, it's like the process get worse, the repairs don't get done. People are on the phone constantly talking about rats, possums, leaks, mold. And I hear the director keep talking about real time. When is real time going to happen for the people who have all these issues? And I hear the lady that came on that's been telling y'all about.
Ms. Matthews.
Situations, and y'all, no, like, can I say one more thing, sir? And I promise you, I won't.
One more thing.
Why is it that you said that, I believe it was you, because I don't see faces, I hear voices? The person said at the end of the meetings or whatever, y'all do, they send y'all a report of what was done. Why is this lady still on the phone talking about, they said they was going to reach out, and you again said somebody would reach out to you, and nothing really be happening? Because that's why I keep saying sound effect. And the domino effect is real. That's all I have to say.
Okay, thank you very much.
And I'm going to answer the question.
Thank you. We're going to move on.
Next is Mr. Treese Belt.
Yes, hi. I'm Treese Belt, I'm the chair of the Berry Farms Citizens and Allies. So what is this 1A residence? How are they going to choose the 50 families that's going to go in this next, whatever you guys are talking about, is a proposal for another building? I know about the senior, the Asbury. I'm confused and want to get the information correct to the residents. How are they going to tell what 50 families are going to go in this public housing in the building? And then what about the families that were in single family homes? I don't, I'm confused. When did we come up with another building? Residents do not know anything about this, never heard of it. So what's happening here? I don't understand. Thank you.
Okay. Thank, thank you, Ms. Belt. So I, because of the importance of this, I'm going to ask Director Donald to just, very briefly, go over the, the plan again. How many units? How many buildings? And the timeframe specifically for this new building, 1A? When it would start construction? And how long would it take to be completed? Which I think Commissioner Murphy actually already said.
And I know there's a pretty comprehensive website that we can refer people to, right?
And how are they going to, I'm sorry, how are they going to choose what 50 families are going to back in there?
Yes, so Ms. Belt, we'll make sure, and I know you were invited to all of the meetings and get all of the updates. This is the second property. This is the family building, so we're very excited about that. And there will be a process with priority tiering, as there is for all of the properties, to determine who comes back. There's a, will be, everyone will be fully engaged. I think we just had a meeting a month ago, and we'll continue to meet quarterly with everybody and make sure that you have all of that information. We're, we're excited because this project is moving along now after it had been stalled for many, many years. And this vote by the board will move it along faster.
Well, and we should clarify, one of the reasons that it was held up was because of litigation. It was.
Correct.
Right. So some people threw sand in the gears. Some of this delay is not the responsibility of DCHA.
So, so given that, I'll ask for a motion to approve Resolution 23-17. Second, did you get that? Any further discussion? So roll call vote on Resolution 23-17.
Okay. Commissioner Lee?
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Murphy?
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Silla?
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Blackson?
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Dickerson?
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Harris?
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Thank you. And Chairman Skinner?
Yes.
Thank you. You have eight yes, the resolution is approved.
Thank you. Okay. So we still have some other members of the public who wish to testify. And again, we broke it up to have the residents go first. And now we're going to have other members of the public who can testify to move forward.
The first general public resident is Jasmine Copeland. Jasmine Copeland, are you there? Okay, I'll move on. Craig London, Mr. London?
Yes, I'm here.
Yes, thank you. You have three minutes.
My name is Craig London, and I am a board member of the DC Housing Providers Association, DCHPA. We have more than 2,300 housing provider members, of which roughly 1,000 members actively connect with us each month. Our members operate properties that house an estimated 50% of the voucher tenants in the city. Between our members and DCHA as landlord of all public housing, we have a combined responsibility for about two thirds of all tenants that have either vouchers or live in public housing. Our interests are completely aligned when it comes to the rules in this city that govern landlord-tenant relations. We also share the heavy cost of rules passed by the city council that adversely impact our good tenants. Our organization has been absent and ineffective in educating the committee on housing of the adverse impact of existing statutes and policies. I am here to admit to this failure. Collectively, the private landlords and DCHA are in serious danger of additional legislation being contemplated by the committee on housing. Last week's DCHA oversight hearing was a scary experience for anyone paying attention. Committee Chairman Robert White repeatedly questioned the landlord regarding the length of the lease of a problematic tenant, implying that he could just ask the tenant to leave the building at the end of the lease. This is not at all how the laws work in DC. We have urgent work to do to educate the committee members on the impact of their own rules. In another exchange between Councilman Matthew Fruman and Executive Director Donald, Fruman seemed to have no understanding that lowering rents could destabilize the market and lead to a lower supply of landlords willing to accept vouchers. Now that the council has created this starboard and taken a more active oversight role, the tables have turned, and a DCHA failure will also be the failure of the council and be a bad look personally for the committee members. We have more leverage than we have ever had, and DCHA needs to switch from defense to offense to influence legislation. With only minor tweaks to existing legislation, all private landlords and DCHA can shave up to 30% of our operating costs, reduce tenant complaints, and provide stability to, to our best tenants. I am asking you, Chairman Skinner, to discuss this matter with Executive Director Donald. The DCHPA is willing to dedicate the time and resources and handle the heavy lifting to educate the committee on housing, but we need to approach this in coordination with DCHA rather than as an isolated entity. When it comes to protecting the 97% of our tenants that follow the rules from the behavior of the worst 3% of our tenants, our interests are totally aligned with DCHA, and the timing is perfect to help the committee members become legislative heroes that can take credit for DCHA's forthcoming success. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. London.
Okay, thank you. Next is Dorothy Douglas. Dorothy Douglas? Okay, I'll move on. Rob Pilkington? Mr. Pilkington? And lastly, Anthony Bolz? And lastly, Anthony Bowles?
Hello, how are you doing? This is Anthony Bowles.
Yes, Mr. Bowles, yes.
Yes, we can hear you.
You have three minutes.
All right, I'd like to say thank you to
We lost you, Mr. Bow.
Actually a resident, I've been in Washington DC since nineteen eighty-five. And to speak on a couple of issues, one issue is, you know, I'm unique, I'm a senior, I just turned sixty-four in February. I've been homeless for five years. I've lived in the back of a yard and Ward Five in the backyard in a car. I, what I want to put emphasis on at this moment in time is, I've put, filled out different applications with DC Housing. I give my respect to a person who died in DC Housing, his name was Louis Dexter Stark, you know, who was very helpful at times, but it was really a rough situation on different times. The reason I'm reaching out to you guys, not only for myself, because I'm a unique situation, my situation is, is that, you know, my homelessness has not became because I chose to be homeless, it's because how the system is. You know, I went through different government contracts that the government never paid for subsidized programs, you know, and the amount of about thirteen million went behind. So it's not that I'm a unusual homeless person. I have a degree in electrical engineering and applied physics, so it's not that I can't do jobs, I do do jobs, I have my own business here in Washington DC. But what I found the issue taking place are a few issues here when it comes to DC housing, when it comes to seniors and the homeless itself. One issue is, there's no transparency when it comes to the developers and the contracts that the developers make with the housing and the government itself. We should be able to see what's going on so we know what to do and how to do it. You cannot get access to that. Two, on the websites, which I filled out a couple of years ago, a couple of times, three or four times, sent emails, there's still no respondents to that. What they always say, well, you know, two thousand thirteen, we stopped taking applications, but that doesn't make sense when we're doing twenty billion dollars a year contracts, and some of that money's going to the DC housing, and there's multiple programs in the DC housing, and there's no way that, that one two thousand thirteen hole that they say deals with all those contracts. So you guys should be able to make it very easy and transparent, excuse me, transparent for us as people in order to be able to have access to some of the resources of that. I don't want to talk too much, I don't want to use all my three minutes, but I do want to say at this moment in time is, really, there should be a lot more transparency when it comes to the DC housing. When you guys say you're supposed to do something on your website, you should do it. And me, as a person who's went through the whole homeless process, still homeless itself, and come to find out that no one does what they really say they do, and it's so complicated for the seniors. I'm a senior. You had, since when I was sixty-two, I filled out for housing. I'm sixty-four now, and this is DC housing, not just the DH, the Housing Health and Human Services. So I want to say at this moment in time, you should be more transparent, and you should make the policies and procedures online more real. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bowles. Okay, I think that's all of the remaining public testimony. So as I said in the beginning of the meeting, this new board, the starboard, we're in the process of going through and implementing a number of the requirements in our authorizing legislation. And one of those is to have, I believe it's four listening sessions by May of two thousand twenty-three. So we're in the process now of organizing and scheduling those listening sessions. We're gonna try to do two in May and two in, I'm sorry, two in April and then two in May. And the requirement was that one in each quadrant, so there'll be one in Northwest, Southwest, Northeast, Southeast. So again, we will be scheduling those, and you will get the information posted on our website, and we'll also reach out to do other outreach to let people know about these listening sessions in the community. Is there any other business to come before the board today? Any comments from commissioners? Okay, here
I'd like to make a comment.
Okay.
Thanks to Director and the staff for doing a great job, and the board itself. I like the spirit, we got a lot of work, a lot of problems, but I just wanna, and you don't get a lot of encouragement and a lot of affirmation, but I want to, and I have no reason for doing this other than I know personally that you're trying the best you can, we all are, and we're gonna keep trying. So I want to thank you all for all the work, the hard work that you do. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Commissioner Dickerson.
I would like to make a comment, and it's for the residents. Please reach out. You do not have to wait for a board meeting to have your problems resolved. The Citywide Advisory Board here, Commissioner Blackson is here. We are all here for you. So if you just reach out to us, we will gladly help you. So when you have the next meeting, you too can say, we did it right this time. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Burbridge. Okay, so the next board meeting, the board, next Board of Commissioners meeting will be held on Wednesday, April the twelfth, two thousand, two thousand twenty-three, at one PM via WebEx. Information regarding viewing or participating in the meeting live can be found at www.DC Housing dot org. If there's no other business, the Chair will entertain a motion to adjourn. So the meeting is now adjourned, it is three fifteen PM.
He's not allowed to ask a question.
Thank you.